This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
There we go. All right, good evening. Today is June 7th. It is 6:01 PM. This is the City Council of East Hampton Public Safety Meeting. Present today is myself, the Chair, O'Zara. We have our Clerk, Brad Riley, and President Gomez. Are you sitting in for councilor?
I'll move to be here and I will vote and continue.
Okay, thank you. Also present today for our quarterly report for public safety, in this case Fire Department, is Chief Norris. We have minutes from the last meeting. Let me just pull those up. I reviewed those earlier. These are from the May 3 meeting. They seem to be in order. Thank you, Counselor Riley. At this time, I don't have any concerns about them. I'll take a motion to approve.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 3, 2022.
Okay. I'll take a second. Are you willing to? You aren't here, though. I'll second that motion then. And all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved, 2-0. Motion from Counselor Riley and a second from me. At this time... Here's, we have some members from the public. Open public speak time. I'll make a note that these are for comments. We cannot respond, but we'll certainly take notes and likely not items on our agenda. Sir, are you here to make a public comment or are you just here to listen? Okay, and so just state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
There's not a lot of other people here, so I'll give you what I consider a reasonable amount of time, but if you go out, I'll let you know.
I'll be brief. Eric Feibler, F.I.E.L.L. 183 Park Street. Yeah, so we're here on the recommendation of Salem Derby. My wife's been in contact with him off and on about Park Street traffic speeding and concerns that we have. We were right off the rotary towards town, Second House. And evenings are worse, like it's like a drag race down there. Like some same cars go up and down, 50, 60, 70 miles an hour right off the chute. And, you know, we've been there about 10 years now, so we've never seen it like this. We have concerns about the use, about non-view and, you know, the, there's decreased pedestrian and bicycle traffic there as well. And so we just, we see it in a bad way. It's hard to pull out of the driveway when there's people coming through there. We've heard it from my neighbors as well. And so we just wanted to see if people were aware of that issue. I know Park Street is, you know, especially that straightaway is a known problem, but if there's anything that can be done in terms of mitigating that or enforcing the speed limit. It's right near the school, so I would hope that there would be some ability to enforce the speed limit right there for all of Park Street, especially right there. It's true the other way as well. We can hear the cars taking off the other way. So, yeah, it's gotten worse and worse, and we just don't know what to do. Salem says that there has been a traffic study or there will be one. There is one in progress, so I'm looking forward to hearing the results of that. One's available. But we're trying to advocate any way we can to let it go. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Well, public comment's always important, and you're definitely heard and acknowledged. Feel free to email me as well, o'Zara, o'Zara@easthamptonma.gov.
Okay.
Happy to chat with you outside this meeting. And I can't comment here, but we're certainly happy to talk more about this.
Okay.
You're certainly welcome to stay for more of the meeting if you'd like.
I think he would prefer to get home.
We appreciate it. Please, if you please email me. I'd love to chat more about it.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody.
Okay, is there anyone else? Thank you so much for coming and participating in local government. Is there anyone else here from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we can move on to our main agenda. Quarterly, the Fire Department quarterly report. This is part of our ongoing quarterly reports from public safety, which includes Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works. We last had Public Works here. And we're coming back around the cycle with Chief Norris from FD. Just some clear rules for the committee. Just raise your hand to be recognized. Wait for the Chair to call on you unless directed otherwise. And I will turn it over to you now, Chief Norris.
Okay, perfect. Thank you and good evening. It's going to be back here again to present to Public Safety Committee. Again, we started this initiative well over a year ago just to have that ongoing continual dialogue, keep everyone updated for best of our abilities as to the ongoings at the Fire Department. I've got a number of voted items that I want to walk around through, and certainly as we go through the votes and items, please stop me at any point if I don't make myself clear or you have questions on anything that I work through this. The first section is some personnel updates. We're very happy to be moving through some of the process with two of our new firefighters. We continue to engage the City Public Safety Committee in all of these personnel changes. We had the pleasure of Counselor Riley being there today. Thank you again very much. As we interviewed the final two candidates for official firefighters, that went very well. We're going to work with Emily Russo in the HR department to get some letters out to those two individuals. In addition, Counselor Zer, you have the opportunity to sit with us for the interview for deputy fire chief, which an offer has been made to Captain Kevin Benson. So he's in the process of contract negotiations with the city right now. That's going very well. So thank you for your participation in that process. And then the other component we had today that Counselor Riley had the opportunity to sit in on was the interview for the official fire captain, which was created in vacancy with Commissioner Kevin Benson. So Emily, you're reaching out to that individual with Jason Dunham to get a letter out to him as well. So those transitions will all be happening in early July. So thank you again for all of your help on that. In terms of budgets and the grants, I'm working with Brenda Roofier, the Administrator Assistant at the Fire Department. She oversees the budget and all the grants at the department. She does an exceptional job. We're aiming to close out this current fiscal year, so we're right on track with no concerns right now. Hopefully, we'll work any significant events between now and end of the year, which are always kind of a concern. Counselor Riley, I can briefly talk about that today real quick. Right now, everything's trending, looking very well at holdout this fiscal year. As you may remember, looking at some of the grants, we always are looking for different grant opportunities, alternative funding sources. And three, the big ones we have pending out there right now, the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. That grant is two components. One is the LED sign, and one is funded for the continuation of our smoke detector installation program that we started with Red Cross this year. So that grant is out there for $58,000. I'm hoping to hear me by September, October. And then the air compressor. The air compressor filling station for all of our SCBA's, our self-contained breathing apparatus, those cylinders, that unit is a 1984. I have it serviced quarterly, and I've been told by the company that that already has outlived its lifespan being a 1984. And so we applied for a grant for $96,000 to get that upgraded and replaced. I'm hoping to hear by September on that one. And then the brush truck. That brush truck is a 1985. The city actually doesn't even own it. That was given to the city, I'm guessing around 10 years ago. They put some funding into it. They rehabbed it. It's actually owned by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, but that's a 1985. It's seen some better days, so we applied for a brand-new brush truck with $25,000. Just as a side note, those grants, those three grants would require, if awarded, a 5% match by the city. So what I always do is before I go and apply for any grant, I sit with the mayor, I talk with her about our initiatives, and I make her aware of those matching funds, just so in the event we are awarded it and no one's caught off guard and then get permission to proceed or not proceed. So those are the three big grants that are out there pending right now. Some ongoing actions within the department. Iron Respondent. Iron Respondent, a software program that we're using for electronic capabilities and technology for hydrant locations and callbacks. That's working very well. The IT Department, Karen and also Noah, at the time of this initiative, they were exceptional. They did a lot of like work for us to get this up and running, and the goal is to transition that to full mobile data right in early July. What that will do in terms of our operational capability, if we respond to a call, we would have the ability to write in the vehicles, to see the hydrant locations, the size of the mains with the callbacks of personnel. We can see in structure fires who's coming back on callback and all that nature. So that's up and running, working well. Switching gears, some public outreach and education. We completed last week and will finish up this week the CPR for Parks and Recs Division to hopefully get them propped to speed before the summer camps begin. We were able to send six new people to coordinates in hospital to have them trained as instructors, and we also had some grant funds that we were able to purchase some new mannequins and some AED trainers. So that's all in the works. That's working very well. We partnered with the Council on Agent, and we're going to offer a fire extinguisher training program on 629 Fire Station. One of our goals is to continue that training throughout the community because a lot of times after people call 911 immediately, if it's safe to do so, they may have the ability to get trained properly and have an extinguisher to control that small incipient fire. So that's one of our goals, is to get some more people trained out there, get some more extinguishers out there, and roll that training out on 629 and also going forward. Our car seat installation program, that's going exceptionally well. We actually had a call today for an installation that we'll be doing early next week. We've been trying to do weekend installations, getting that publicized out there for people and hopefully at convenience of their schedules. We have four of us that are trained at the department as car seat technicians. Surprisingly, it's actually a pretty in-depth program with all the different makes and manufacturers of vehicles, all different makes and manufacturers of car seats. In terms of trying to get them to be compatible, it is a challenge. So the initial program is actually a three-day class, 24 hours, but we have four of us at the department, so we're able to get those done pretty efficiently. Looking at some fire prevention inspections, we're finalizing some of the inspections with the new school. Dan Conce, Captain Dan Conce has been working really hard with the crews over there who are finalizing that building project. Dan's also working over at Perry Street a lot with Fire Perry Street and those mill renovations. We've got our crews going over there doing walkthroughs. Those started yesterday, they continue today, and will continue through the end of the week to develop personnel over there. So additional training, we did, our initiative two years ago, been working with the mayor, was to get a minimum of two live-fire trainings each year. These are those high-risk events that we need to make sure we have them. Our people are very competent and can function safely. So we finished up this fiscal year, this past Saturday down in Springfield, we rented out their burn building, and we worked with both North Hampton and West Hampton, who are mutual aid partners, to do some live-fire training. City School. The city school presentation for city councils went very well. That was done on 4/28, and we're looking to continue that going forward as of years as well. Again, one of our initiatives is to continually try to help people understand what it is we do and what resources we use to do our job. So that certainly is a key component of having the city leadership and at least once a year can see that firsthand. All the annual service was completed literally yesterday. We tested out our ground ladders, the aerials, the extinguishers, SCBA's, the hoses, the pumps, all the EMS equipment and the air cascade filling station. Those are required based on industry best practice and national standards to get serviced annually. We had our hoses tested, completed yesterday. They found a number of lengths that we can throw out that did not meet the pressure test requirements. So it certainly serves its purpose, and we were able to get all that stuff completed. One of the initiatives this year is we ended up partnering with dispatch personnel, and we sent them to a fire academy class. We were able to send four people from dispatch to a May Day training. That was out in Westboro. It was an eight-hour class, and it basically trained the dispatchers on how to handle an event that involved a May Day, the downed fire that were trapped in the building. So I give the dispatchers much credit for attending that training. Our goal is to get through the summer months and then in the fall, when the vacation period kind of dies down, try to send another four people to the similar training program as well. And then the ambulance inspections. I am very proud and happy. I caught some people a few months back, but I'm very proud to let this committee know that when our ambulance inspection was done back in February, there was no deficiencies. They came in, they went through all three ambulances, all the equipment, our training records, our administrative records, and it went exceptionally well. They are required to come in at a minimum once a year. They typically will come in around January, February, but they can spot check us at any point they want. They look at all our report, write documentation. They actually sent in two inspectors this year. They just sent in one. They sent in two inspectors. They went through everything very diligently, and they did not find anything. So very happy to report that out to this committee and the city. Some future initiatives. Just as we did the city school back in April, I want to continue that same initiative and have momentum and offer it up to the public. And again, I don't think now, between now and end of the summer is a good time, so I'd like to start publicizing it in another month or so and then kind of formalize it to do something maybe in the month of August, maybe over the course of like five weeks, maybe like two hours a night over five weeks, and just give the public a chance to come in and see a more detailed look at the Fire Department and the same thing. This is what we use. Try it on, come see this, come touch this and better understand what it is that we do out there. So I want to look at that in the fall time. In terms of some safety initiatives, Engine 1 and Engine 2 and Car 4, three of the most used vehicles on our fleet, they don't have backup cameras. Particularly, we look at Engine 1 and Engine 2, those are more concerns for me because of the larger size, the length of those vehicles, and based on our staff, and sometimes people are operating those by themselves. So I really want to, I talked to Motor Repair about us purchasing the cameras and then doing the installations. They've done the installation for four, so going into a new fiscal year, I want to use some of our funding for that.
Hi, Counselor Gomez.
I think, um, for the public, I think everybody knows what is Engine 1 and what is Car 4.
Car 4, thank you. Car 4 is a support vehicle that the Fire Department uses. It's a pickup truck. With that pickup truck, that's used to support emergency responses. It goes on a lot of medical calls in support of the ambulances. And then for the backup camera, its purpose would be none of the day-to-day operations, but when we have to hook up that support vehicle to the boat and the other support trailers in the back parking lot, that's where I look at the camera for that vehicle, more so for those operational purposes. Officer development, again, looking at, again, as you felt being part of the promotional process and having new people in positions, I talked about setting them up for success and giving them opportunities that others may have not had to be successful, to take on that leadership role and help continue that momentum of our organization to the future. There's a lot of academy classes, officers in the Department of Fire Services. There's some at the National Fire Academy, and there's some through the Mass Emergency Management Agency. So I want to look at some of those opportunities for them. I talked about hose testing. Grant-funded hoses and nozzle replacements should be arriving soon. So we applied for a federal grant last year that was awarded. It was around $19,900. That hose and nozzles, those were ordered the week before Thanksgiving. We have a tracking number that was sent to us yesterday saying it should be arriving now, the end of this week. So I'm hoping, once all that comes in, we will get all that in service and kind of complete that project as well. Just to give people an idea from the public and this committee, that grant, when we applied for that, that hose is going to replace a hose that was manufactured in 1977. And when, again, we look at kind of the expectations of industry best practice, we're not supposed to be using any fire hose that the manufacturer tried for 1987. So that was kind of the, what sparked that initiative to get that replaced. Counselor Riley, did you have a question for me, sir?
Yes, Counselor Riley.
Yeah, so just to clarify then, so earlier you talked about, you know, some of the hose links that had to be removed because they didn't pass inspection.
Correct.
Does this $19,900 also cover the cost of those as well, or is this a separate?
It will replace those that we ended up, that ended up not passing this hose testing, that will replace some of those as well.
Okay.
When I did the initial grant, it was to replace all of the expired hoses based on the data manufacturer. I'll have to see how it patches out if some of those hoses were some newer ones. I may have to press a couple lines here or there.
Okay, and then, do you have within your own budget, is there budgeted cost for that, or is that something that you would need to come to the full council for to replace, you know, if it doesn't cover the full cost of the hoses?
So the replacement of hoses, my goal is to hopefully keep it within my original requested budget for next fiscal year. When you talk about a length of hose, which is 50 feet, dependent on the, it's based on the diameter, like one roll of a 50-foot, 3-inch hose, that right now is around $300, just to give you an idea. We do have a line item for equipment in the 500 budget, so the goal always is to replace some of that stuff within that, within that line item.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Go ahead, Chief. Good question.
Let's see. So that was, oh, no, and then that next bullet, working toward reducing the city ISO rating. So ISO, ISO is the insurance service organization. Every community has an ISO rating, and that helps base our homeowner insurance rates. That scale is on a scale of 1 through 10, with 10 being the worst. Right now, the city of East Hampton is out of 5. That was done back in 2018. It's usually reevaluated every 10 years. My goal, I met with the DPDW director and also the dispatch supervisor, is to work with them and get that done. I want to say that on a front row too. It's based on Fire Department operations, Fire Department training, water supply, and also our communications, our dispatch. So that's why I met with Greg Norman and I met with Brenda about kind of their role and that, so they better understand that they know kind of what they need to be collecting for data. If we can continue to collect good data and make some forward progress, I'd like to actually request ISO to come out, maybe next May. That will give me, in my tenure, close to three years of data to be collected and kind of built, and then see if that will bring that number down from a 5 to a 3 at that point, and continue to work towards a 2. So I just wanted to keep you in the loop, certainly as to one of the goals. I've talked a lot about EMS in the past, which I'll touch on briefly in a little bit, but on the fire side, there's something we can do to, in the long term, save the community a little bit on their homeowner insurance rates.
Let's see a question, Counselor Riley.
That's just really what I was, I was trying to clarify in, in the most simplistic terms. So theoretically, the lower that number is, that factors into the equations for how homeowner insurance premiums are determined?
It is.
Okay.
And I don't want to misspeak and say that it's equivalent across the board because it's really, my understanding is based on the insurance carriers and how much weight they put on that number.
Sure, sure.
But the concept is, the lower number you have, the better the community is equipped to deal with a fire.
Yes.
Thereby lessening the potential payout from the insurance companies.
Right, okay, great.
So that's the ultimate big picture concept.
Yep, very cool.
To sit here and tell the community that's going to come down X amount of money, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that.
Right.
But it certainly would weigh in while we're in there with the premiums.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any comments that I, Counselor Riley, could?
No, no, that was good. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that's what I was hearing. It sounds great, thank you.
Continue, Chief. Mobile data, I mentioned that with the iron respondent again, just that initiative going into July is to get that iron respondent in those fire pre-plans. The pre-plan, again, just to clarify for clarity of the public, is we have this database that has information for a lot of the city buildings in it that right now we don't have access to all the street. So if we built that database, if we get called for an event that one of mills down at 180 Pleasant Street, we would have that information available so we can make our capital decisions based on the information right at our fingertips right there. So that's one of the goals, and I talked about hydrants as well. With that iron respondent capability, as they're going to the calls, they have the ability to call where the hydrant locations are and the size of mains they are. Dispatchers are very excited about this. They have the ability to look at this also, but one of the challenges is, one of the benefits by having it mobile, mobile in the vehicle, the dispatchers can be so busy and overwhelmed during the fire, they may not have the time between the time you need to build and come to ride on the scene because they're getting calls, their dispatchers out, they're calling mutual aid as well. They don't have the time to look to see where the hydrant is and the location of it. Training, continuation.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Is there, is there a yearly cost to that? Do we have to pay a yearly fee?
There is. I signed a three-year contract and it's $650 per year for iron respondent.
That's, yeah, thank you.
Training, continuing to build out our fire and US training program. So as you've gotten to know me in the last couple of years, I'm a huge advocate for training for a number of reasons. Captain Matt Sandler, who's in, who's our training officer now, has done a great job since he's been in position since last July. He's actually going to be transitioning into a ship, and Captain Sandy Prowse will be in there. Sandy, I know will pick up and continue that same forward progress. Sandy is also in the state Fire Academy, so it's a good match for her here back in East Hampton to take some of the knowledge she's gained at the state Fire Academy and do it every day with us. I've continued to work with them. Again, we were able to get to Springfield burn building this past weekend. We've got some props coming from the academy line for the fall time, so our relationship with the Fire Academy certainly is paying dividends back to our personnel and the services they provide. Collaboration and group purchasing of supplies. So one of the constant themes that the council has heard me come forward with is the cost of EMS supplies, and a lot of it is out of my control based on a number of different factors. And I've used the example to help people better understand, I use a boxer gloves. I've got written documentation from the company we purchased from, Boundary, that back in 2019, a boxer gloves was $67 for a case. That same boxer gloves for the same items in today's dollars is over $267 per case. It's frustrating, it's, it's required, we need this equipment to do our, to do our jobs. And what I've done is I've reached out to some area services who provide the same services, North Hampton, Highland Ambulance, and we're looking into doing a collaborative purchase. So if, the concept like anything, if we can buy it in bulk, maybe we can reduce our costs. And a lot of people will sometimes quickly say, well, it shouldn't matter if you're purchasing off of the state bid list because that is collaboratively bid already. The thing that sometimes the public may not understand is a lot of companies aren't on that state bid list because what the state bid list does, when you put your items on there, they then take the cost that you charge and increase that a little bit more to, they have to make some money off as well. You can actually buy a lot of these products cheaper directly from these companies and then using this group purchasing outside of it to get that cost down. So I'm just, I want to share that information with everyone that, yes, as much as the costs are going up, we're trying to figure out other ways to control those costs, and this is one way that we're trying to explore going into a new fiscal year with this collaborative purchasing and can work with some of the communities out there. So I'll keep you updated on that as well. And then the last future initiative I have voted out during the purposes before, and I say this, we're not going to solve this here tonight, but it's just to keep on everyone's radar, is our radio communications infrastructure for that is challenging. We're going to be in the process of getting some better information in terms of where we have some of those challenges with our radios, but I just, going forward, we're still going to need some help. I have it in our capital plan. I've had some good conversations with the mayor, and we're just trying to wrap our head around what needs to be. head around what needs to lean on, and then try to identify some funding sources, whether that's grants or opportunities to then fix that deficiency. And then, if you, I'll pause there for a minute.
Are there any, yes, so are there any other questions from this broader presentation? I have two, Chief.
Yes.
So this is more for clarification to make sure, I think I understand this correctly too, so the two new firefighters.
Yes.
Those are, we had a recent retirement, correct?
Craig Gannon retired on March 31st.
And then with, with firefighter Benson being promoted to deputy, and then firefighter Dunham being promoted to captain, that leaves a space too. Is that the cap for the two?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. And then, the 5% grant match?
Yes.
Is that, do you have to have that money approved by the city prior to the application? In other words, does it have to be submitted to the grant?
You do not.
Okay, so you can get the grant approved and then you come to?
Yes, and in fact, when I, I mentioned, before I, before I apply for anything, I always sit with the mayor, talk about the initiative, and then get permission to then apply. Even when you apply, let's say the economy took a turn for the worse, and we're awarded the brush truck, and I'm not a math major, but let's round us to $300,000. We're going to need $15,000 for that 5% match. If at that time, the mayor says, you know what, I know you got the grant, but we're not going to accept the award, we have that right to decline the award. It doesn't work well in the eyes of the federal government, but the city does retain that right up until the last minute of getting the award letter for the mayor to say, you know what, times have changed, we're going to decline that award. Did I answer your question, sir?
You did, and then just also lastly, just now, picking you off the top of my head also, how large do you anticipate the, the, the Citizen Academy being? How many people have time?
Oh man, that's a good question. I can open it up to, I can fit 30 people comfortably in our training room, so I can open it up to 30. Would I anticipate that many? I would hope so, me being the optimist, I would hope so. I think a lot of it comes down to other people's time constraints. People are so busy nowadays. I struggle with, should I get a five-week, two-hour program each night? Should I get a four-week, two-hour program? What night of the week works best? What timeframe works best? I think we just need to roll it out this first time, trial, let's see how it goes, get feedback and make adjustments going forward. Well, I can, I can hold up to 30 people if there's that demand in the city, and I hope there is. I love doing these types of sort of projects. I lead people through our station and see what we have to offer, so.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions here before Chief moves on to financials?
No, that sounds good. This one.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you. Just to the same line of the training for the public, is going to be any age restrictions for the public?
I think I, when I do, I would do 18 and over. Yeah, I would do 18 and over. When you think about, if I want to do things like the extrication tools and so on the like, I just would want to make sure that people will be able to participate and go back to these.
Are there waivers that are required for that, or what's?
If they were, if they're adults, there, there wouldn't be.
Okay, great. Anything else on that? Okay, you have some financials for us?
I have some statistics for it.
Okay.
So, in terms of, just to give you, as we start to wind down this fiscal year, what I did was I ran the numbers today from July 1st through today. So it doesn't give us the full year's picture, but close enough. So looking at that first page you're looking at, total number of incidents so far is 3,210. And these are all the same document inside email on all of you folks as well. Up top, in the pie chart, you can see the breakdown based on the percentages, and then you can see in the chart below there are the actual numbers themselves. So that's kind of to date where we're at. As a side note, when I went, I like doing comparisons, when I went back and looked at the comparison for the same exact timeline from last year, we're 500 calls over where we were the same time last year.
Great.
Looking at the next page.
Oh, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
What, can you give me some examples of what the false alarms and false calls look like?
Yeah, so false alarms, when, so when you look at 8% of our calls are false alarms, that's actually a low percentage of our overall calls. When you talk about false alarms, that can be anything from going to someone's home for a smoke detector activation, and you get there, and it was going, it was activated for no apparent cause. So we can't say that it's tied to cooking smoke. If we can't say it's tied to maybe steam or shower, there's no known reason, it would go under a false alarm. Those are the broader categories that we have for reporting to the national database.
Great.
Going to the next page, people always are wondering, hey, what's the busiest day of the week? It's actually, as you can see, looking at the numbers, pretty consistent. But people always ask me, hey, what day of the week is the busiest? I tell them, and East Hampton, it's consistent. They're like, no way.
You want to make a comment? Okay, every day is a busy day.
It is.
Based on these numbers. Okay, every day is a busy day.
Every day is a busy day, it's consistent over there. And again, when you look at our call, I love the comparisons, it's 500 calls higher than what's the same time last year, and even across the board per day of the week, so.
Chief, do you know anecdotally if there's certain types of calls that occur during certain times of day?
In terms of like medicals or fires, car accidents?
Yeah, I mean, fires, I guess, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's things that have certain patterns with?
I'd want to pull the data to speak more clearly on that, but I think if I was to say, looking at the times of day, if that's your question, I think most of the medical calls happen between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Typically during, when people wake up in the morning, they're going to work an hour and then they go to bed. So I think that's a fair statement without having to write it down. Good for the next page.
Yeah, everyone else good with that? Go ahead, Chief.
So this one here, this page, it gives you the incident count at the top, 3210, which we've already kind of talked about. When you look at the CO checks, those are for carbon monoxide incidents that we've had. So we've had 40 carbon monoxide incidents, just as a side note. The one I like to look at, or the next couple of categories, looking at mutual aid right there in the center. So since July through today, we've given a total of 444 responses for mutual aid, and in that same timeframe, we received, we received 50 calls for mutual aid. So we are going quite a bit. Again, as a side note, that 444 calls, those also represent West Hampton calls, which I have the number for you, which is around 122 right now. But if you back out that 122 from the 444, those would be the North Hamptons, the South Hamptons, the Hoyos, and I have that breaking, I have that broken down three further in a minute. And then the next one, the overlapping calls, this is the other one that I diligently track. So overlapping calls is a call comes in for a medical emergency, and two people go on the ambulance. While that unit is still tied up and unavailable, 29, 25% of the time, at the same timeframe, another call comes in. And that's important just to understand, because with five people on duty, two people go out for a medical call, then 30% of the time, two more people leave for another call, that's leaving one person back at the station 30% of the time. I shared that with you just as a point of information, because sometimes, sometimes people forget that our mission is both fire protection and EMS response. And over the last 15 years, we've gotten away from that fire protection. We're collecting more data on that, but that very clearly gives you one point as to what that fire protection sometimes looks like. And then the last one there is response times. The overall average is 7 minutes and 21 seconds, which if you look at that mutual aid given up earlier, that response time's actually very well. If I was to back out just a call for East Hampton, it'll be probably four to five minutes. And then our turnout time, basically from the time we're alerted to the time we have the vehicles on the road moving, is 53 seconds. So again, just another one that will move in pretty quick when we get notified, obviously it's our job. If we go to the next page to break down some of the medical responses, again, this is one that I diligently track just to provide information to the city leadership. This breaks it down in terms of mutual aid calls for medicals, both in terms of when we're the primary unit and when we're an intercept. So the first call, the emergency East Hampton, we've gone, we've done 2008 for medical emergencies in East Hampton. We've gone to West Hampton 122 times. We've gone to South Hampton as the primary unit 75 times. We've gone to North Hampton as a primary unit 56 times. We've gone to Hoyok as a primary unit 50 times. And then we've gone to South Hampton as the emergency intercept. They had an ambulance respond, but the basic EMT level, and they needed permanent services. That's what that intercept is. So we've gone to South Hampton 45 times as an intercept, and we've gone to Hoyok six times as an intercept, and then there's a miscellaneous of five others.
Hey, congratulations on your new paramedics ability.
Yes, we've had three people trained in paramedic over the last couple of years, so that's gone well. So that kind of gives you a more detailed breakdown as to our resources and where they're going.
Any questions on that?
That's great.
Go ahead, Chief.
The next one, the other one I like to look at is destination facility. So obviously, every time we go to a medical call, it does not require a transport. Around 20% of the time, we'll go and provide treatment, and people may feel okay and not go to the hospital, we give a signed patient refusal. But when we do transport patients, we go to all different areas. Our most common one is Cooley Dickinson Hospital, and then we go to Hoyok Hospital a fair amount as well. But the other one that's been picked up based on severity of the calls, and also based on our state protocols, is Bay State. We have to go to Bay State for anyone who's having, that needs to go to a cath lab to get the cardiac catheterization. We have to go there for severe pediatrics, and that is the only Level 1 trauma center in the area as well. If we have a Level 1 trauma, we can't, we are not supposed to take them to Cooley Dickinson Hospital. So what I did is I ran a report for the hospitals that we've gone to. So you can see first, Cooley Dickinson Hospital, very clear as I stated, we've gone there 1,015 times. Where it says no, 514, those are your refusals, or a patient wasn't there, whatever, that nullifies the response. Bay State Medical Center, we've gone 370 times since July. Hoyok Hospital, we've gone to 205 times. Mercy Medical Center, 27 times. Noble Hospital, 11, and Franklin Medical Center, 1. So this information is important as an administrator, because now I need to make sure in terms of resource management, I have, we talked about coverage in those overlapping calls, now I've got people leaving what I call our service zone, going to Bay State 370 times. A minimum of two people, sometimes three, based on the speed of car, for call, are now gone to Bay State 370 times. So now, they're out of our service zone, they're out of service longer, the turnaround time is longer, the wear and tear on the vehicles are longer, the mileage on the vehicles is increasing more. So that's where it's important. I talked about comparisons, if you flip the page, I ran the numbers for the same exact time last year, and I talked to, and I talked about how the severity of the calls have been increasing. Look at Bay State, the same timeframe last year, we only went to 245 times. So about 130, 125 calls more from the same timeframe that gone to Bay State. Time out of service, personnel gone, wear and tear, mileage, fuel consumption. Again, just trying to just frame the overall understanding of the EMS delivery system.
And Chief, what's the typical, typical time spent by an ambulance crew with all, in total, going to Bay State compared to the Cooley Dickinson?
So from the time the call comes in, we go to the scene, transport to Bay State, and come back, it can be anywhere between an hour and a half, two hours. When you talk about Cooley Dickinson or Hoyok, I consider those two hospitals within our service zone, and what I mean by that is, if they are at Hoyok Hospital or Cooley Dick, and they need to turn around quickly and get back here because another call is pending or already is ongoing, they can leave those two facilities and get back there rather quick. Those calls typically from start to finish can be back here within an hour. So that gives you a kind of a better understanding of time out of service. They go to Bay State, it takes longer to transfer care over to the healthcare personnel down there. Usually the, the report is more detailed based on the severity of the call, and also the cleanup and decon procedures will look greater based on what happens in back to ambulance going on Bay State. So I just wanted to share those comparisons and trying to frame the understanding of the overall system as well. Overall, we're doing very good. I'm so proud of the personnel and service they provide. That's why I'm always telling people, we have Counselor Gannon coming to ride with us on May 17th. I love having the city leadership coming to ride with us, we're so proud of our service. That's why we're always encouraging everyone to stop by, come by, and check it out, and that's why we want to do the class for the city public class and show the community what they have here at their city, so. But those are some of the recent statistics that we have there, so we're, we're doing well.
Very thorough and certainly appreciated, and I appreciate all of the municipal action as well as the community initiatives. Any, any follow-up questions for the Chief? Counselor Riley?
Not really a question, just to say, you know, thank you for always bringing so much information, being able to talk about it so clearly. It makes our job a lot easier to be able to, to be presented with information like this, and you've done it consistently, so I just want to thank you for that, it really helps.
Thank you, and one of our goals now that, as we start to build out some of this thing, is utilization of the city website. I want to take, once the budget process is completed, I want to take at least the fire unit aside and put that up there on our website, maybe type out some narratives or line items and what they need for the public, so people can access that if they're looking to get a little more information. But we're trying very hard to help people understand, because we're proud of what we do. It's an open door, we are absolutely proud of what we do, and we want people to understand and understand that.
And thank you for involving the council with all their promotions and interviews, I think it's great to be collaborative and to create a.
Yeah, no, Counselor Gomez and I started that well over a year ago, and we've continued it through all of your tenures here, and we hope to continue that going forward. It's great to have the active participation, so greatly, greatly appreciated from all of you. It's been great.
Any other questions, Counselors? All right, Chief, well, you were appreciated, thanks for letting me.
Easy enough, and please, any questions come up, please crack me down.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you all.
Yeah, how great, Chief, thanks so much for, for being here. So moving on the agenda, I received some information about the ordinance review committee report, thank you. I have to look it over. My goal is to, I will forward that to you, Counselor Riley and Counselor Derby, and then I think we can identify which items we're able to tackle at the next meeting, which is July 12th. So that meeting, we will have the police quarterly report, we will hopefully have a vendor here from the electric speed signs, and we, and I also, my understanding too, President Gomez, and former Chair of Gomez of this committee, is that you already kind of tackled some of the items on the ordinance review committee?
Yes.
And that's in that?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I think that should go quickly once we, once we get into it. Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, when I send you the report, some of them, they already said that we take some actions, and with the vote, it was 2-0, it was only Counselor Salem and myself. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and I can do any clarification if you need it.
That's great, I appreciate it, I appreciate all your work on, both on the committee as well as, the ordinance review committee as well as the public safety debate committee prior. It's certainly, you know, these quarterly reports are great, and thank you for issuing those.
I do love it.
No, it's great. So I'll forward those out and obviously recommend that the other counselors on this committee review all the relevant ordinance beforehand, they cover their own notes. There's really nothing else here to this.
450 is July.
It's July 12th, so that first, it's the second Tuesday of, because that first one didn't work, and it's at 6:00 PM in this room, and I confirm with the clerk as well. Potentially by then. Potentially by then, there might be a hybrid option, I'm going to try to sit down with Karine or, or you.